Who are we missing?
Katie.
Oh, Katie.
She's calling in.
She's calling into the executive session. Yeah.
I think she's coming at five. I think she's just. She's calling in for the executive session, she told me. So I'm assuming she's coming in at five.
You mean coming or calling?
Coming at five. She's calling at four thirty.
Oh, she on her way back from Rainsville? She's in Rainsville Beach.
Oh, well then.
Who are we missing, Katie?
I think she's calling at four thirty and staying.
She's calling into the executive session. Yeah.
I think she's coming at five. I think she's just. She's calling in for the executive session, she told me. So I'm assuming she's coming.
Good afternoon. It is three o'clock, Tuesday, July.
Coming at five. She's calling at four thirty.
Order to acknowledge that the press and public have been duly notified that the meeting is.
Oh, well then.
With the Freedom of Information Act. Nicole, would you do roll call, please?
Absolutely. Councilmember Bogosian.
Here.
Councilmember Han.
Here.
Councilmember Myers. Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Streitman. Councilmember Popson. Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Mayor Pounds.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. First item is citizens' comments.
I don't have anyone signed up for citizens' comments for this particular meeting.
Okay, thank you. Special presentations from Applied Technology Management and Discussion of Design, the Public Dock at the IOP Marina. Desiree, you want to kick us off? You.
Yes, we have Kirby Marshall from ATM with us, and he is going to be walking us through the design of the new public dock at the Alapalms Marina. As you all know, we have them engaged to go through the design, go through the permitting process, and assist us with bidding and construction management. This project is slated for construction in FY twenty-four fiscal year that we're in right now. Kirby is going to walk us through and give us a little bit of an update on the permitting where we are, and essentially just getting feedback from all of you about what the final design of the dock will look like and what it will include. And this feedback will be important so that they can finalize the engineering on the dock project that is going to go out for bid, hopefully soon in the next couple of months, with the goal of starting construction end of this year and completing before the next summer, you know, voting season. So with that, I'll kind of turn it over to Kirby, and we'll have an opportunity to answer questions and clarify anything if needed based on the design that we have so far.
Okay, council, we have a hard copy of this presentation.
And for those that are not here, the presentation that you have in front of you and that is being shown on the screen behind me is also available on the website next to the agenda for tonight's meeting under other files. So everybody can watch and follow the conversation as well.
Kirby, thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Good to be here. As Desiree mentioned, we just wanted to give you all an update where we were really with the permitting and design process for the public dock. We intend this to be an interactive discussion. So we've presented and will present several slides that have some imagery on them, like to solicit your feedback, make sure we're on the right track with regard to materials and aesthetics and function and things like that. I'm pretty confident that we are based on the detailed discussions that Desiree and Douglas and I have had, but just wanted to show you where we are right now, give you the opportunity for feedback so that we can include that in the final design package that we'll hopefully put on the street here for bidding in the next month or two. I didn't want to be too loud. Great. The images shown on the screen here indicate the arrangement of the proposed public dock as opposed to the angled, narrow dock that exists out there today, the former water sports dock, the current public dock. We intend this to be a very straight dock, coming straight out from shore. It's a little bit easier to construct. It's a little bit more efficient with the usage of water space and provides us the opportunity to get a nice wide sixteen-foot main walkway leading out from shore, about one hundred and fifty, one hundred and sixty feet out to the pierhead, to about the area where the existing pierhead is. Off the side of the main public dock will be an ADA gangway, similar to the large gangways that are out at the marina now. Large eighty-foot long, I think it's six or eight feet wide in this case. And that is to facilitate ADA access at lower tide levels. We also intend this gangway to be a little bit wider because at the base of the gangway, we have a floating dock that incorporates two handicapped accessible kayak launches for the public to dolly their kayaks down and launch them out into the waterway. We've got those kayak launches situated parallel to the waterway, not perpendicular, and that's purposeful so that the kayak may not shoot out into the waterway if there's oncoming boat traffic. So they're oriented parallel to the waterway. They're behind the floating dock, should be a very safe arrangement for launching, and it should provide the ability to launch the kayaks at all tide levels, even at low tide. On the outside, we've got a floating dock seventy-five feet long by ten feet wide, generally similar to the size of the floating dock that's out there now, probably a little bit wider. And that's to accommodate day access for kayakers to stage when they're launching or coming in retrieving, maybe for a day boater to come and tie up and get something at the store and then hop back out. But no overnight birthing is contemplated out there right now. The dock, we envision that to be a very similar construction to the existing marina, either timber or aluminum frame dock structure with timber decking, and we can talk about the decking materials in a little bit, but that's the general configuration of the public dock that we've been working on in terms of the planning, the permitting, and the design work. Y'all have any questions about that? Yes, sir.
For the launch. Sorry about that. So as you just hit on the kayak launch, do we know what, how many feet we have at low tide?
It's one to two feet. It was really tight for the jet skis to get in and out, but for the kayaks, it should be no problem.
Okay, Kirby. Here.
Yes, sir.
On the aluminum gangway, you said that that's going to be about eight feet wide. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's either six or eight. I don't remember.
Would that accommodate?
It's eight. I'm sorry. Yes. Eight feet wide. Yeah.
Okay, would that accommodate, for example, if you had two wheelchairs, would it accommodate them going side by side, or would one have to wait for the other?
No, it would accommodate side by side.
So it's wide enough to accommodate traffic both ways?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
And I have a question to follow up with that. Will there be a railing on that dock, on that gangway?
Absolutely. The ADA specifies very finite elements in terms of railing, a handrail, specific height of the handrail, the diameter of the handrail, the offset of the handrail from the face of the of the gangway, a kick plate at the bottom so that the wheelchair wheels can't get caught or slide off the side. So it would be, it will be very well protected and fully ADA compliant.
Okay. And for the dock itself, where you have these covered areas with seating, will that allow wheelchairs to go all the way to the end of that dock?
Yes, absolutely. Yes. And we can talk about that a little bit more as we go through some of the images.
I just had a request on decking. I am looking into decking at my house that's the replacement.
Do you know the product name? That'd be good. We've heard and used the Cool Deck product before. It's a very similar type of concrete material that's cool to the touch and slip resistant. But if you have a specific product name, that'd be, that'd be great. We. Good, thanks. Great. Thank you all. We'll get into some of the images and details, and I'm sure it'll spur more more comments and discussion. Really quickly, just wanted to let you know where we are from a permitting perspective. We talked a little bit about this before the meeting. A joint permit application was submitted on behalf of the city for this project. We had preliminary meetings with the Corps of Engineers and the state of South Carolina, OCRM. Those meetings were generally benign since we just re-permitted the water sports dock a couple of years ago, I think in two thousand twenty. We kind of knew all the hot button issues that we were facing out there specifically with the core and the channel offsets and things like that. So we were very deliberate about how we laid this project out, keeping the previous feedback in mind. OCRM, the state agency, indicated some preliminary concern with regard to the width of the dock. They only wanted the dock to be as wide as it needed to be. And we laid out a case in those preliminary discussions, and then in the permit application that stated we needed the width that we showed here, which was sixteen feet wide for items like you had mentioned, wheelchairs passing, getting all the way to the end of the dock, providing patrons safe and clear access, COVID clearances and things like that, just trying to be safe and social distance. The permit went through initial agency review. They found it administratively complete. They didn't issue any stop work or concerns with regard to the width of the dock. They put it on to public notice. Public notice has concluded with both the state and federal agencies. And the only public comments received were from, I think it was either DNR or Fish and Wildlife that, you know, standard manatee protection guidelines be implemented during construction. If you see a manatee, don't harass the manatee, avoid the manatee, things of that nature. Same conditions were applied to the marina construction permit a few years ago. We responded favorably after consultation with Desiree that those are fine conditions, and the agencies are now in the in the process of issuing the permit, and that could take a few months to do from an administrative standpoint, but we're following up with them on a regular basis. I just followed up with them this week and just to prod them along to get the permit moving. And since we got that public comment back and we didn't find any or hear any highly negative comments about the layout or design or width of the pier, we've been proceeding diligently with the design of the structure. We didn't want to do that and get out ahead of ourselves in case there was some agency comment that said, no, you can only have it eight feet wide because that would affect the structural design as we're proceeding with it. But with no public comments, we felt pretty comfortable that things will be issued as we've proposed. So that's where we are from a regulatory standpoint, and now we're in the design process. As indicated in our preliminary scope of services that was approved by the city, we've assumed this structure will be a timber frame structure, timber piles, timber framing, timber decking, although glad to consider alternate decking. Great. I have heard of that site, but thank you. So we'll talk about decking and can incorporate that perhaps even if not as the design alternative, as maybe an alternate to look at in bidding from a pricing perspective, but assuming that, we're assuming a timber handrail, and we'll talk a little bit about handrails. Desiree and Douglas suggested three ADA wheelchair-level handrail depressions along the main run to allow folks either to fish or to observe from a wheelchair so they don't have to look up too high over the handrail. So we've incorporated that into the design. We talked a little bit about the aluminum gangway, the floating dock at the base of the gangway and the ADA compliant kayak launch. And we'll look a little at each of those elements in a little bit more detail. Utilities, very basic utility plan for this dock. Walkway lighting down the main walkway, one to two light pedestals out on the floating dock just for convenience and safety and the market for so boaters don't run into it, and for folks that are coming in or leaving at dark so they have some safe footing out on the dock, one water spigot on the fixed pier, one water spigot on the floating dock for maintenance, for cleaning it off, things like that. That would be for city use, not for public use. That's what we're thinking. And speaking with the fire department at the city, they did require us to include a fire stand pipe system down there just in case there's a boat that's tied up down there that's in need of assistance. The code technically does require the fire stand pipe system, so we've incorporated that into the design as well. Very similar to what's out on the new floating docks at the marina. I'm going to move this, and you all can look at it better than, you're not looking at the screen anyway. But here are some basic cross-sections that we've been working from. Timber frame piles, timber piles going down, cross bracing going across, timber pile caps at the top. Robust construction. This is a public pier. We're thinking at least fifty pounds per square foot construction. It's not a residential quality pier. The intracoastal dock, as it is now, that was built, I think in two thousand four, that fixed pier was a very robust construction. This will be similar to that, and that's done well. It's aged well, needs a little TLC, but it's aged very well. Timber decking or handrail, perhaps the composite decking as we've discussed. And then in the two sections along the walkway, we have the covered roof areas just to provide some shade, some seating, and we'll talk about different seating options. We had discussed with Desiree and Douglas the potential to integrate swings in those areas for folks to sit, swing, look out over the waterway, and just enjoy the breeze out there. So that's what we've been working with in terms of those covered areas. The metal roof would match the metal roof on the restaurant and the marina, so it looks tied together with the rest of the site. So that's basically the gist of the the design, which is pretty standard. Handrails are something I wanted to talk to you all about today and get your feedback. On the upper left picture, that's a picture of the intracoastal dock. So we have a standard two-by-two wood picket oriented vertically. On the right-hand side is the existing public dock, formerly the water sports dock, same type of handrail picket. On the lower left is the steel vertical picket that exists behind the marina store, along the restaurant, and in that area. And then on the lower right is the nice nautical rope handrail that was integrated to the new boardwalk along the intracoastal, which looks really good, but may not be appropriate for out over the water on this fixed pier. So we've got a couple of different handrail types. We know that the, obviously, the existing public dock is going away. In future years, the public dock will, the intracoastal dock will receive a refurbishment or redevelopment, and that may go away, but we've got the two handrail types on the bottom that we either maybe want to consider matching or doing something similar or doing something different, but we wanted to get your feedback on that. One type of handrail that we've found to be very popular in our work or in and around Charleston and in other folks' work that we see along the water, and you probably see a lot of this in some of the homes and porches and patios on the island, is the horizontal stainless steel cables which are shown in these pictures. They look really great. They can be designed to be ADA compliant, pretty easy to install. I don't want to say maintenance-free, but lower maintenance than painting pickets. So it's something that looks really nice that we've done on a lot of projects, but but we want to get your feedback as to, you know, what you might want to see out there so that we can incorporate that into the design program for the for the dock. Yes. On this one? Or on this one? Yeah, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's no bumper at the bottom there because there's a limited vertical drop on the water side, and I don't, I don't believe that a barrier is required for that application. That's a good, that's a good point. We've seen some of that as well, especially in places with little kids that would climb up. They do get loose. They require some maintenance, but the vertical steel pickets have been pretty resilient at the marina, I think. So that's a good point, as is the kick plate. Yeah, could be safer for sure. That makes sense. Great. Thank you all. We talked a little bit about decking. We hit on that a little bit. The the upper left picture on this slide, the decking slide, is the new boardwalk that was constructed along the waterway at the marina. E-Pay decking looks beautiful here. It just had sprinkled when I took this photo, so when it rains, that rich, dark wood color really comes out, so it looks great. On the right-hand side is a picture of the marina with the new docks out there. It's got E-Pay on it as well. It's dry, so it looks a little bit gray or silver, still very, you know, decay-resistant, nice hardwood. The lower left is a picture of the intracoastal dock, and it's just got standard southern yellow pine decking, which is fine and good and used very frequently throughout the Low Country. It's not quite as resilient, requires some preservative treatment, and can decay over time. So what we had anticipated in this project and preliminary discussions was just to continue the E-Pay look from the boardwalk out onto the public dock to really tie that in from an aesthetic standpoint, not discounting the qualities of the concrete composite. I think that's something we can look at and maybe consider as well, but that's where we are on decking, and just wanted to see if y'all had any feedback on that. That's a pretty easy one. This one might be more fun. Underneath the shade structure, we had talked to Desiree and Douglas early on about potentially integrating some swings or bench seating or things like that. Underneath that shade area, just to provide people a place to sit down out of the heat in the summertime to enjoy the water and the breezes. The town of Mount Pleasant has done a good job on their pier with the swings and benches and things like that. And here are some photos of what they have out there, very heavy-duty steel swings. It's not not like a playground swing which swings violently and can get loose. This is a very controlled swing. You only have a certain amount of travel space that the swing is allowed to move, so wheelchairs can continue to pass even if someone's swinging out there. We don't have to worry about any kind of any kind of impacts in that regard, but perhaps integrating some sort of hanging swing there, and if we don't want to do that, maybe bench seating, a flat bench or a bench with a back on it, and we just wanted to get y'all's feedback and comments on that. Yeah. We had originally contemplated a single swing underneath each one. I mean, that can be, we can do a combination, we can do two, we can do one in the middle, we can do a bench and a swing. It's very, very flexible, whatever y'all would like, really. I think from a simplicity standpoint, we were just thinking a single bench underneath each one. You know, maybe a standard porch swing is about six feet long, so maybe six or possibly even eight feet long to allow a family to sit there and swing and enjoy the waterway. Everything will be wide open. Yeah. Combination of swing and bench. Okay. That sounds great. Good.
That's bottom left on that second versus the vertical. Are there any safety advantages or disadvantages? It seems like with the the horizontal wire with the base, I think Jan, you were suggesting for the for the wheelchairs, that seems to maybe get us the safety checked, but maybe a little bit more aesthetically pleasing with the horizontal. Any pluses or minuses with the two?
It's, I think that what we've seen is the climbing has, can loosen the horizontal. Cables. Again, it's just a maintenance issue. There's turnbuckles involved and maintenance staff, either Marina maintenance or. City maintenance staff may have to tighten them. Little kids will get up on there, whereas the. The vertical pickets, you don't have that as, as, as much, but. I mean, the aesthetics are different. Personally, I think the horizontal is a little bit more visually pleasing, but I appreciate the safety of the, of the vertical, so.
Hey, I'm Justin Davis with ATM as well. I'm working on the design. I did just want to point out on that bottom left that we were just talking about. How the top is angled. One of the specific reasons for that is to prevent. People from getting up there and trying to tight walk or tight rope walk along the top. So just something else to consider.
We'll plan to incorporate that. It also helps wash the bird. Leaving's off when it rains. So. Those, those are good, good questions.
I think the swings will look. I think they're going to be great out there. Nice asset for the city.
And then at, at the bottom, we talked about kayak launches and we've got gone into the plan on the floating dock. To, I think I might have skipped a slide. Well. I deleted a slide at home accidentally. I'll tell you about. The, before we get to the kayak launch, I want to talk about the floating dock at the bottom. The kayak launch will be integrated into the floating dock, the base of the gangway. For flotation purposes and to have an integrated solution down there. That's, that's resilient. We're thinking that the floating dock would be of similar construction to the Marina. I know we had a little bit of. Some challenges with the particular manufacturer of the dock at the Marina, but I think the end product came out very nice. It's very nice, resilient product, aesthetically pleasing, aluminum frame, E-Pay decking. Something like that. We'll either go with that or we might bid out as an alternate, a timber frame with an E-Pay deck on top. Again, for resiliency, cost efficiency, you know, right on the waterway. We want something pretty robust. I don't think. You want to go with a concrete dock out there. That's a lot more expensive. I don't think it's necessary. In this application, I think something similar to what you have the Marina. Would integrate well aesthetically and, and perform well from a. From an engineering standpoint. So that, that's what we've planned out there. The kayak launches can be very effectively incorporated into either an aluminum frame or a timber frame floating dock prop. We have in the permit two sloped launches going into the water and there are any manner of. ADA handicapped aids that can be incorporated on top of the floating dock to facilitate. Folks with disabilities transferring from wheelchairs into the kayak. And we can include. A very robust program for that or a very. Basic program for that. In the upper left hand. Picture shown here. We have an aluminum frame floating dock with the kayak launch ramp included with two very basic. Tubular structures to facilitate transfer from wheelchair into the kayak. Those tube structures can facilitate able bodied access into the kayaks as well. They're not very obtrusive. They're very helpful. And I think they, they meet the purpose. There's no specific requirement, guideline, code, or anything like that that governs. How much? Extra. Hardware you put on the surface of the floating dock to facilitate. ADA launch. It's, it's up to you. So I wanted to present a few different. Alternatives for you to consider and we're happy to include any one of those into the, into the plan. So. Upper left, the two basic grab rails. It's very unobtrusive, very helpful, does the job. On the upper right, there's a little stairwell. That's incorporated with an overhead grasp rail that helps transfer folks. In and out of the kayak, a little bit more. Assistance, hard hardware assistance included in this option. And in the bottom left is, is the most robust. Assistance possible with an extending bench that is integrated and folks can get on the bench. And the bench extends out over the kayak and they're able to, to, to access the vessel that way. So. Just wanted to get your general thoughts. We don't have to pick a specific here, but wanted to get some guidance on. How robust you want to, to make the ADA assistance at the kayak launch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, a couple of questions on that in regards to different type of launches here. Generally speaking, what kind of difference would be, would we be looking at in cost between the three? Could just kind of give us a ballpark idea.
Not dramatic.
Not dramatic.
Thousands, not tens of thousands.
Okay, all right. Well, personally, I would say and would hope that we would go with the most robust. Of the options for a couple of reasons. You know, number one, we have an aging population, which indeed does do some kayaking. And sometimes maybe you don't need complete ADA compliance, but it's a little bit easier for the elderly to get in and out of a kayak. Secondly, we do have a resolution we put in place this council last year. It was last year. Time flies when you're having fun, but, but we, we basically stated as a city. That we would do everything we could to not only be ADA compliant, but to go over and above where it's necessary or where we, where, where we can. And in this situation, I think this is one that would fit that bill in my mind, that we would go with the most robust option.
Sounds great.
Kirby, so do all of these three options fit within whatever the permit says?
Yes, we can, we can manipulate. We can customize any one of these to fit within the parameters of the.
So the permit wouldn't have to be amended?
No. No.
In terms of maintenance, are all of these easy maintenance? Just basically you put them in and they take care of themselves except for the regular maintenance that you do on a dock?
Great question. The, the more complex solutions, the more maintenance is required. The, the most robust solution has some moving parts. And anytime you have moving parts, you get a little bit of maintenance. So there's, there's, you know, there's always that trade off.
Kirby, what's your timeframe for meeting? This seems like the most. Design decision. That you need. I mean, what's your timing for that? Because if we're, if we're talking thousands of dollars difference. Some of the others are, I'd go with the most robust personally.
Well, here's something else I want to, I want to throw out there at you. We've got two launches. Proposed in the, in the plan and in the permit. Something I was thinking about was maybe you go. In consideration of the, the city's resolution. Go. Robust on one of them and maybe not as robust on the other one to allow. Maybe some faster launching for able bodied folks in the one side. And then if. When the folks that really need it go out there, the other side has it for them. Then that may be something to think about.
Good point.
That's great. So what about a gate? Is that? Obviously this is wider, lot ways wider, so we can incorporate the gate we have down there. And I would think that we would still need or want some kind of gate. To keep it locked at night or something like that. So. Is that then an idea? And is that affected by the permit?
So there, I don't believe there's a gate shown in the permanent application. We had discussed kind of. Open access to the pier. That's not to say a gate couldn't be added from a structural perspective. Easily can. From a permitting perspective, that's a very minor. Letter request or letter amendment that. I can't see requiring public notice or any substantial. Permit processing time. So if that's something the city wants to do, that can be incorporated for sure.
And, and last question, Mr. Mayor. So. If we thought about putting. A ladder down as a floating pier in case somebody was to fall in. Flip side of that is that might encourage swimming. So. Any idea of, I, I think there's got to be something down there in case some little kid falls in. How to get him out? Low tide, they could probably get around and get onto the floaters and get out, but.
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, there's no, again, there's no code that requires that. But we often incorporate safety ladders in our Marina plans. And they can be. Permanent ladders that are, that have the rungs down in the water. More often than not, we're incorporating lifting ladders. Which all the entire ladder, including the rungs are out of the water, but if someone falls in, they're able, they're aluminum, so they're ultra lightweight. You lift the rungs, you drop the rungs, kind of like you're dropping the ladder off the back of your boat on the, on the swim platform. Flip it over and you're able to climb out. I think incorporating a lifting ladder to either one of the ends. Of the floating dock makes a lot of sense. Still preserves that long side tie along the waterway. But provides that safety that you're talking about. And of course, that could be coupled with a no swimming sign to, to try to deter that.
Got you. Thanks.
Sure.
Kirby, thank you guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yep, we're, we're full steam ahead. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Desiree.
All right. Next item in your packet is dashboard of city operations. Desiree or Douglas?
All right, you have a copy of the June twenty three dashboard. It's in your packet. Go ahead and get started on the city revenues and expenses by category. We'll get a little bit more detail when we go to the financial statements at the end of this meeting, but we're tracking really nicely. We're looking at potentially a $1.2 million positive net result at the end of the fiscal year. It's not reflected here because there's a lot of payments that have not yet been collected. So we won't know until about an additional month. For police department charges, we're tracking ahead of the last two years on traffic speeding. Livability, you can see that we're almost triple compared to last year. So that. Reflects the focus that we have been putting on enforcement of the livability ordinances. And the efforts done by our police department with having dedicated resources for this, for this work. I wanted to point out municipal court dockets, the number of cases almost doubled compared to last year. And twenty twenty one as well, we're up to three hundred this past month compared to two hundred in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. Public works, garbage yard and debris. You don't have the June numbers in your dashboard, but they're pretty much in line with twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. So not. Not a whole lot of the difference there. We did see an uptick in May, but that kind of leveled off for this past month. Fire department called by type. Here you can see we have had for the calendar year to date. Seven hundred and twenty three calls. Of those two hundred and thirty one were auto aid calls. And of those. Only twenty three were actually responded to by our police department. Two hundred and eight were canceled in route. And here you can see that. Throughout this whole testing or pilot program of the automatic aid with Mount Pleasant and North Charleston and. A whole lot of other departments in our region. We have been the receiver and benefactor essentially of that, of that operation. We've. Attended to twenty three and received aid from other departments eighty two, eighty two times. So I think that. That's working well. As you, as we all know, we're. Monitoring the auto aid, the automatic aid program. And at the end of the year, we'll have a review. With the public safety committee with council before we make any decisions moving forward, but. I think so far it's, it's working well for our community. Recreation Department registrations of.
Turn the volume down here. The twenty twenty three bars are very, very high compared to the prior years. Is there any particular reason why per se and. The jumps seem fairly considerable? Reading that right?
You are.
Twenty three versus twenty two versus twenty one for all, all categories. It looks like they're quite.
So that's including the twenty twenty three numbers is including auto aid calls. Even those that were canceled in route. That's why we made the note at the bottom.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So for recreation department registrations, again, a significant update compared to June of the prior two years. Rec department folks are really busy and. Doing great work. And then for the building department, just pointing out, we made the change compared, the dashboard that you've seen before, that you had seen before. Was a little confusing because it was comparing license year and calendar year. So we made the distinction here. So you can see that. As of the, you know, to the end of June, towards the end of June. The licenses issued are currently, were currently at seventeen oh two. The recent analysis you received as of July seventh, it's a more updated number. So we had two more between the time this report was issued and. That SDR report was, was completed. Yes, Blair.
Before we leave that page, the first. Blocks city revenue. Why, can you explain what the tourism in. And incorporates what's in the tourism revenues? Because the revenues are down from budgeted.
So they're, they're not, they're showing down here because we have not yet collected. There's quarterly payments that have not yet been received. So we do anticipate ending the year way higher and that includes accommodation taxes, beach preservation. State A tax, local, local hospitality, all of those together. You're welcome.
If you look on a monthly basis in the, in the financials, they're up year over year, fairly significantly.
Yes, and we'll continue to see that trend for the end, for, for this fiscal year. And then last personnel vacancies, just a couple of updates on the police department. The police officer vacancy and the code enforcement vacancy have been filled. Offers have been issued and accepted. So that has happened in the last week. So this is, again, as of June, we, we did, we did have those two vacancies. We do, or we, we're still looking for additional BSOs. Our goal, as y'all recall, a couple of months ago, council approved. Increasing the budget for BSOs and doubling the amount of folks that we, that we try to hire every season to twenty. We typically. Aim to, to have ten. We currently have thirteen, have one that it's gonna, I believe is gonna start in the next week or so. So we still, we're, we're looking for about six additional. As we all know, after July. Visitation and sort of. Day tripping activity tends to be, tends to slower down. However, we still want to be able to. Fully be fully staffed towards, towards Labor Day and even after that. So we're hoping and we're continuing the, the advocacy and recruitment for, for those roles. And then just the upcoming community events, farmer's market, as we all know, we have that from June through October, Thursday, Thursday of the month. Very exciting event. I believe the first one was a. Crazy success. I was not able to come, but I won't miss the next one. The beach run is July twenty ninth. The recreation center is having a college application boot camp. That's very exciting for those folks that are going to go to college. And then the annual half rubber tournament is going to be held on Saturday, August twelfth. I don't have anything else, Mayor.
Thank you, Desiree. In your packet or departmental reports, any questions on those? We'll just keep rocking. Item six, strategic plan, policy initiatives and priorities. Nothing this go round for livability be environmental update on minor dune repair project between one fourteen and three oh four Ocean Boulevard, Desiree?
Yes. So since council at your last meeting approved. The pursuing a project for minor dune re-nourishment between one fourteen and three oh four. We contacted a couple of contractors and asked for pricing for the actual work. We have received two proposals so far. They are both higher than the estimated. Cost that we had received from our engineers. We have gone back to both contractors and asked them to revise their proposal. And are waiting and expecting additional proposals by tomorrow. I think that will be higher than the two thirty two thousand that we had estimated. Using data from our engineers from prior projects. Will be over that, but I think we're going to be, we're going to do much better than the proposal we had already received. It's over four hundred thousand. We have also made contact with SCPRT, the funding agency that has. The ability to cover at least half of the cost of construction. And we believe that our application is going to be favored. For, for funding. The application is almost complete. We anticipate sending that over to them for their review. In the next few days. And because it is a small project, we have been told that the. Application review will likely go. application review will likely go fairly quick. Um, in order for us to continue to be eligible for that grant, um, uh, grant, uh, program, we cannot start work until we receive notice from them whether or not it's, it's eligible. So they understand the, um, urgency and sort of critical nature of this project. And, um, I think we'll be, um, sensitive to that when they review and receive our application. Um, so I anticipate being able to, um, again, have final proposals by tomorrow, send out the grant application to SCPRT. And hopefully within a week, maybe a week and a half, we would hear back from PRT on whether or not our application has been successful.
Where are we on the easement issue?
So we have, um, received a draft agreement from our attorneys, um, regarding the, um, it's, it's essentially a construction easement. The property owners that will be receiving sand have to authorize the city to do this project. And I have sent that over to you all, uh, a few days ago, and I'm waiting for some feedback. If any of you have any particular questions for the city attorney, I can certainly, uh, facilitate that and have them address any, any legal questions.
I haven't seen the easement. Does it include language concerning the public trust doctrine?
It does not.
Right. That's something I think that, that we as a council need to consider. We're spending public money. And we need to clarify that it's, that it is part of the public trust doctrine. Uh, to do otherwise leaves just it wide open for litigation. And I think it's something that we should require as a city. If we're going to spend public money, then, then the accretion should be public land.
I, I don't understand what, what that is. The, the, um, the law's the law, right?
No, it's not. The law is open and there's a public trust doctrine that exists, but it has not been ruled on by the Supreme Court. So it is an open question of law.
So we're not going to solve it here?
Yes, we can solve it.
We're not going to take it to Supreme Court and have them?
No, we don't have to. If you, if you include the language in the easement and say that it's the city's position that we're spending public money and that you will be bound by the public law, uh, law, the public trust doctrine, then it's over. It doesn't matter.
But that's not our attorney's interpretation of what the state law says.
No, that isn't. That has nothing to do with his interpretation. His interpretation is that it's an open question of law because the Supreme Court has not ruled. That has nothing to do with whether or not the city can take the position that the public doctrine, public trust doctrine exists, which it does, and that we want to be, want you to be bound by it if you're going to receive public money to shore up erosion.
Mr. Mayor, can we just take this to our attorney?
Yes, he, he's taking this out at this point. It sounds like.
There, there is some language in the current draft of that easement document that essentially says that the city makes no claims on any property rights that does, that currently don't exist. So I think it's not necessarily staying silent on it, but not taking a position on whether or not any accretion is to be interpreted as becoming accreted land that's no longer part of the, of the, uh, real property. Um, there, I, you know, there is a section of state law that deals with that. I think we've heard different interpretations of what that section means. And ultimately, the decision from the attorneys working on this was, um, to include not stay silent, but just include some statement that, you know, there's no, there's no solving that private issue, you know, through this agreement. So, I mean, we can certainly have them, you know, I can't speak legal um, opinion and can't speak for our city attorney, certainly don't want to put words in their mouth, but, um, if you don't, you know, I can resend you that agreement and
No, I, I don't need, well, yeah, resend me the agreement, but with all due respect to our attorneys, this is, this is an issue that I think this council needs to vote on. As to whether or not we are going to require people that are accepting public money to be bound by the tru- public trust doctrine. That is certainly within our right to do so. That's a contractual obligation regardless of the law being open. But that's something that we as a council need to make a decision on before we spend a half million dollars and or four hundred thousand dollars, whoever the number is, in public money. Uh, and I mean, so I'm, I'm asking Mayor that we tee this up so that we can vote on that or at least have discussion on this. And if it, if the vote is appropriate, then let's vote on it.
Cause I think by the time we hear back on the bids and from
The granting.
Grants and such, I mean, it'll, we'll be up against council meeting.
So my only point on this though is that it's never been required in the past when we've done this. And it's anytime going forward with any beach re-nourishment, we'd have people all up and down the beach sign and they say.
Which we have done before, right?
We, so for the past, we've had easements and this is, this is what this document for this particular project at Breach Inn Lit would also include a permanent easement along the entire area that's receiving sand. So that we, I mean, there, there will be a public interest associated with this project that's secured through this, through this agreement. Um, the easements that we had with, that we had secured for the two N E eighteen project, it was a very similar document to the one that we're looking at now. And, um, at that point, there was public money, also state, federal and local money that was, um, used to fund the project and, and that position was not taken by the city at that time.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I haven't been able to get down to the last week or so, but I was just wondering, uh, how the escarpment is holding up? Has there been further erosion after the recent high tides that we had that exceeded six feet? Or is it still dry sand near the escarpment and even some minor accretion going on or erosion?
So we went out there the day after the fourth to look at the, um, at the area and the high tide came close, but did not, did not really touch the, the dune and the escarpment. So there is some, some minimal growth that you can see in that area. You know, we don't know if it's wind driven or just sand falling from the same escarpment that's kind of filling in at the bottom. So from our, um, from our observations, the conditions have not gotten worse. I think they're pretty much like they were a few weeks ago. Um, if we do have higher tides and, and, and higher than normal king tides that reach the dune, I think we would see more, more escarpment in the area.
Okay, thanks.
I think so.
Next item, public services update on RFP process to hire a parking vendor for the island for the twenty twenty four beach season, Desiree.
Yeah, so we opened bids last, last week and received six proposals from six different firms. So we're really excited that everybody that attended our pre-bid meetings admitted a proposal. Um, I'll be honest, we have not had a chance to look at those proposals just yet, um, but we will anticipate providing, um, to the Public Safety Committee for their next meeting, a review, an overview of each proposal. And our goal would be to, to narrow it down to about two or three that we want to hear from and invite them to come to a meeting as soon as possible so that they can present their proposal, their qualifications, and we can make a selection so that we can start the, um, contract negotiation for, um, outsourcing parking. So good news on that, I think, was very well received.
Your next item, personnel update on implementation of paramedic program.
Um, okay, so this is a exciting addition to our, um, to city operations. Um, good news is the fire department and our HR manager started working really, uh, pretty quickly on this, advertising the position and uh, two offers have been extended so far. So we're very excited about that. We're looking for six paramedics, just as a reminder. Um, there are a lot of things that need to be in place before this program can go live. We have to, uh, pursue, uh, a license from DHEC. We need to get a physician sort of on board to review our standard operating procedures. We have to, again, uh, hire the additional paramedics. Um, we have to equip our, um, uh, trucks with the cardiac monitors. So there's still a little bit of work to do. Um, just want to manage expectations, not because we have the six paramedics or when we have the six paramedics on staff, we'll be able to go live. But we'll be providing you all monthly updates on where we are as we go along this fiscal year. Uh, but we anticipate and our plan would be to go, um, be ready for full, full deployment of the paramedic program on June first of next year. Yes, ma'am.
Does that include train, the paramedics would be trained up and ready to work?
Our, our goal in what we are advertising is to hire folks that already have a certification.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Desiree.
You're welcome.
Further items, discussion of safety resolution in your packet. This is a manual process that we do. So Desiree, any update and reasoning for this?
Uh, again, this is something that we do every year. Um, the city has a safety committee that meets regularly to make sure that the city is enacting and pursuing policies that, um, ensure the safety of our, of our staff. Um, we have prepared for you a, uh, draft of the resolution. We'll be presenting for your vote next month. Um, there has been the suggestion made by a resident that the city includes some language associated with um, folks that serve our community that are not necessarily city employees, but they, um, serve on a contract basis. And we can certainly make some changes to the resolution to include that. We're certainly committed um, to their safety as well and want to make sure that they're included in whatever language we, um, we present to you all for approval for the safety resolution. So we'll be making those changes for your next, uh, the next version that you may, that you
Would it cover it if we just added contract employees or something like that?
Yes, sir.
Cause it could be broader than public works at some point, for sure.
Will include more inclusive language. How about that?
Next item also in your packet, presentation of the, uh, Berkeley, Charleston, Dorchester County of Governments report of South Carolina demographic changes, uh, four or five pages from a deck. Jan, you want to touch on that?
Yes, at our last meeting, there was an, um, an, an update from the, uh, state's, let's see, the Revenue and Physical Affairs Office, I guess, is the one that, that did it. Um, and briefly, I just wanted to point out a couple of things that I thought were pertinent to us. The first one is, uh, our population is growing in the, in the state. Um, and will continue to grow in the future. What is interesting about it is the makeup, uh, about a year ago. Um, our deaths exceeded our births in the state. So we are growing by in my, in migration only. And we are also aging, getting older. So I think that's a, an important consideration when we're going forward is to, to, um, who is going to be living in our state and, and in our community. This holds for, uh, our counties, three county region as well. Um, our employment has recovered from the pandemic and they, our employment levels in the state are now over the pre-pandemic levels and we anticipate they will continue to increase in your second slide. Uh, the third slide is, uh, we go back to the national level. He did not present any, um, information for the state in terms of unemployed persons per job openings. But we now have more jobs in the country than we have unemployed people to fill those jobs. And of course, with a disconnect with qualifications, you can see that the reason why we are experiencing job shortages around, uh, job, unfilled jobs around here is because of that, um, shortage of labor. Um, the next slide is something that I wanted to point out in particular, the US wage and salary growth. It's not, we don't have it for us, but I think we follow the, the national trend. Um, what it shows is that, uh, private sector has been growing and peaked, um, I guess about in the last year, there was a spike and it's now coming down slightly. But the, the, um, wage and salaries are much higher than they were pre-pandemic. Um, what you see on the blue line is, uh, public sector wages which are lower than, generally, they, they, they trend lower than the private sector. But they also lag the prob- private sector by about a year. Because the public, private sector has to recover and make more money, and then they pay their taxes in the following year. So I think what I see here is that, um, for once, I think we got it right when we were considering salary increases at the beginning of the year, when we gave a one, for lack of a better word, a, a one-time bonus plus a bump, slight increase in salaries is which could anticipate that the demand, the salary demand for public sector will probably follow the private sector this year and drop somewhat a little bit, not much. So we will have the right flexibility that we need going forward to manage our budget. And I think there's one more, and I think that is just what, what the population is going to look like going forward. And it's exactly what you would think. We're getting older. Um, our, we will have more and more retirees in, in the region, certainly on Isle of Palms. We are known as an aging, uh, population. The median age for the three county area is going, going to be in the forties in the future. So just all kinds of items that I think are important for us planning in the future that we've already been sort of tracking. So, thanks.
Thank you, Jan. Debbie, next item, financial statements. These are our preliminary and unaudited, uh, reports through our, end of our fiscal year, June thirty, twenty twenty three. And again, this is in your packet.
Now, I'm not, I can hold my own, but before I get started, I want to make sure everybody has met Deborah. Wave your hand, Deborah. We're in week three of training and it's going great. Um, she's a joy to work with. And, um, she's sharp as a tack. So, um, the transition is going very well. Good, um, kudos to Desiree and Janice for finding us a really good person. Good job. Uh, general fund revenues. Again, these are preliminary. We still have, um, several revenue streams, uh, have a month or two to collect. And the general fund, those consist of two months of local option sales tax of the June property tax, which is not a big number, and, um, some franchise fees. The forecast predicts that will, um, beat the budget in the general fund revenues by about two million dollars. But at the same time, will be over budget and expenditures by about eight hundred and fifty thousand. So the net is about one point two. It's the current estimate for the positive net result in the general fund. So we'll continue to, um, work on getting the books closed. The audit will happen. And as y'all know, the last, um, journal entry will be, uh, reflect whatever council's decision is for what we do with that positive net result. As far as the tourism revenues, we still have one to two months to collect on those, plus the final quarter of the state A tax, which is typically a pretty hefty amount. On the expenditure side for the other funds, the forecast is probably a little too conservative. I don't think we'll end up spending as much as the forecast shows, but I left it there just to be safe. Most, um, expenditures, we, we've been invoiced for, we're going to hold accounts payable open for a month or two to make sure we get everything. But, uh, you know, a lot of projects, we rebudgeted in FY twenty four. So any questions on the numbers? Revenues and expenses? Cash balances, we have about forty million in cash overall funds. Let's see. One point nine is unspent drainage proceeds, two point two is unspent ARP funding, and one point five million is unspent PRT funding for dredging. Sixteen point nine million of the forty is restricted for tourism-related expenditures for beach preservation. I mentioned this last month, but it bears repeating. In June, the city made the final principal and interest payment on the rec center expansion. The city also received in June a hundred and twenty thousand in grant funds from the Charleston County Green Belt Program. This reimburses expenses that have already been incurred for the, um, ADA dune walkover at thirty fourth Avenue. We recorded that revenue in the beach preservation fund because that is where the expense for the beach access was, um, booked. Uh, the beach preservation fee, one of the express purposes of that money is beach access. So, um, it's not just preservation, it's also access. Okay, current forecast has us building total fund balances by about four million this year. Um, just a reminder that a significant piece of that relates to drainage that we have rebudgeted in FY twenty four. Moving on to tourism schedules. Moving on to tourism schedules real quickly. Municipal ATAX, we have two months to collect. We had a big May. There still seems to be some fluctuation in how the county distributes funds. I think they're just understaffed and they're having a hard time getting everything distributed as it comes in. I'm sure they'll catch up by the end of the fiscal year. State A tax, we have one quarter left to receive. Last year, that quarter, the tourism related portion only was 886,000. So it'll be a pretty good chunk of change. County passed through the fourth quarter, the fourth quarter still to come. Last year, that amount was 270,000. Hospitality tax, we only have one quarter, I mean, one month to collect. The collections for June were 153,000, which is very close to what it was last year, the same month. Beach preservation preservation fee fund is a kind of a repeat of many A tax. Local option sales tax, we still have two months to collect and they'll be pretty significant months. But that revenue stream running 9% ahead of last year. Any questions?
Interest rate at.
Oh, interest rate is good, it's like 5.35%.
Couple million in interest incomes. Debbie, nice swan song right there. Thank you. She not going anywhere. There are no invitations out for a going away party yet. Next item is procurement approval of replacement SUV for the rec department in the amount of 47,573. You can see where that's budgeted there, Desiree.
Yeah, so this is one of the vehicles that we have slated for replacement in this new fiscal year. As you have seen, we are struggling to get to even find available trucks and vehicles. So there is one that's available right now in I think it's in state. But anyway, it's around 47,573. We anticipated and budgeted 36,000. We do plan on selling the existing vehicle. We anticipate getting between 11 to 13,000 for it. So that would make up the difference of what's what was budgeted and and the the current price. So we are trying to get in approvals. This is included in the budget, so it's been approved by council. We just want to get them approved and get them ordered so that we can secure it, secure them as quickly as possible.
I'm not complaining about it at all. I just want to make sure I understand and for the record, we're paying, it appears 5% above MSRP. Is that correct?
I.
There's a 5% bonus in there, it looks like.
Cost plus 5%.
Cost plus 5%.
Yes, so I do know that this is state contract pricing, so that means it's been, it's been, it's already gone through some procurement with the state.
But then we're having to pay a 5% bonus.
Over.
Availability is where it appears.
Probably.
Or is it 5% above cost, Blair?
I think it's above cost.
I don't think that's 5% above MSRP. MSRP would probably be higher.
So my packet is not loading, so I can't see the sheet that's in the packet, but.
It said five above cost.
Okay.
And are you, you're not looking for an action since this is in the budget and approved?
Well, we will, we because of because of the amount, yeah, the the approval will be at the council meeting at the end of the month.
What's the vehicle used for again?
So this is the vehicle that is used by the recreation director, but it's also used by the staff here to set up for events, to purchase, make, you know, run errands, obviously city related errands, pick up food for special events. So it is, it is not just a the vehicle that's used by, you know, the director to come and go from home to work. It is a highly used vehicle by the department.
Last item is capital projects update. We've expanded that quite a bit for this year, including what's in our fiscal 24 budget as far as projects. So Desiree, you want to? You need, I've got a hard copy if you need.
I do, I have a hard copy here. So we'll start with drainage. We have three major projects on drainage. This started in FY 23, summer moving over. One, starting new, face three drainage, as y'all know, 30th, we're still waiting on some miscellaneous items to be to complete the the work at 30th. That is anticipated to be completed when the crews return in September to start the work at 36. All all of it is going to be done by the same crew at the same time. So we don't anticipate any delays on that when they return. 36th Avenue, as y'all know, this is one that we had to delay until the end of the season due to the timing for the development and fabrication of the junction box. We had some back and forth between the engineers and the junction box manufacturer. That has been resolved. I think the final design has been has been agreed to and and that is really good news. That means that we're going to be able to meet our timeline of of getting this project started right after Labor Day. So good, good news on that. On 41st Avenue, we were waiting on approval from the South Carolina Office of Resilience to be able to utilize grant funds for the purchase of the mitigation credits. Y'all recall that one of the conditions of the permit was to purchase mitigation credits associated with the area, critical area that is going to be disturbed. So that has been done. That that is really great news. Projects have been, funds have been opened up and we are very close to putting the project out for bid and still still anticipating construction to start at the end of this year. And it's a round six month construction timeline. The comprehensive drainage master plan, that that project is moving much slower than what we anticipated. We did hear from the from the engineers that we anticipate receiving this week a copy or final draft of the deliverables. So not much for me to report so far on that until we receive that, but we anticipate getting the full list of recommendations, whether they're developmental or policy driven recommendations for council and then the final report on upcoming drainage projects.
We push to have that for the council meeting at the end of this month and have them do a presentation.
Yeah, we can, we can ask them.
Yeah, this has been lingering. This is not directed at you all. This has been lingering way. And I know they've had turnover and stuff's happened, but it's time to wrap this one up.
I agree. We will make that request and have them come and present that final report to you all at the end of the month. So for the Waterway Boulevard multi use path elevation project, last month, we spent a little bit of time talking about the timing and the grant that we that we submitted for from FEMA. So we are working on developing a request for proposals for an engineering, for us to engage an engineering firm to do the pre award costs that we talked about. We are eligible to do before a funding allocation is announced next year, which is some engineering and permitting costs. So we anticipate them doing that, doing that very soon, so we can get them started on that project. Then the next category that we have is the IOP Marina. I'm going to skip the public dock rehabilitation because we heard from Kirby today. So all this feedback we and the conversation we just had earlier at the meeting will be very helpful for them to complete the design. The T dock repairs, as we all know, we've kind of been delaying this this project until the new operator gets in and starts working on it. Obviously, their main focus is getting the parking lot completed, the store opened. So we'll be picking up that conversation very soon now that they're, I think they're about a week or a few days from from opening. So we we should be, we should be in good shape there. And what I'm planning on on doing is tying that with the bidding process for the public dock and potentially bidding that as an alternate so that we can get the same contractor to it and at the same time and save them some mobile demo costs for for the off season. Dredging.
Yeah, you touched on the potential opening date. I think that's a big question and people are asking. So I think you said a week to 10 days. Is anything set or it's still up in the air?
Nothing. I went out there today and put my eyes on it and they look like they're very close. They're, the store is almost complete. The menu signs are up, inventory and and supplies are all all in place. And I think they're very eager to get to get completed. So the week that really came from me, Jimmy. I think they're a few days, a few days away. So I I think by the, around this weekend, we should see some movement. I'm hoping.
Yeah, Desiree, I think you probably accidentally missed bullet number two under public dock and green space in regards to the city and Islander 71. Could you speak to that a little bit? Because we do have an issue there we need to address.
Yes, you are right. Thank you, Councilmember Streetman, for bringing that up. So and this is more related to the green space area. Y'all recall, we had discussed and conceptualized a a park, a 20 foot park along the inner coastal side of the of the marina next to the dock. And y'all may, you'll recall, a few months ago, we had lengthy conversations about a redesign and redevelopment for that entire north area of the parking lot to include new parking areas, separating the city's parking and city resident parking lot from the restaurant and kind of creating this, the the a little city marina adjacent to the public dock. And with that, negotiating a change to that to that entire entire side with the restaurant so that we can also effectuate the entire park and green space along the entire entire length of that of that boardwalk. We, as you all know, we entered into a temporary parking agreement with the restaurant for this season with the goal of collecting a lot of data and understand demand, understand use so that we could, it would be helpful for all of us to evaluate and ultimately council decide on a on a final plan. Our goal would be to start those conversations very soon with Islanders 71 so that ideally any work and redesign and redesign and redevelopment of the parking lot happens concurrently with the public dock construction. And where we can be all one and done with the with that with a marina and the marina repairs before next season. So I think to that point, Councilmember Streetman, who chairs the Public Facilities and Services Committee, will be initiating that conversation and we're going to start sharing some of the data that we have on use and how it's been operating for the past several, you know, several weekends and hopefully help guide that conversation. But that is, that is a piece that has not yet been resolved, that needs to be resolved in order for us to move forward with the public dock. Not the public dock piece, but the green space part.
And we need to have that meeting fairly quickly here.
Yes, our goal may be next week to to be able to schedule that.
Okay.
All right, so back to dredging. We've executed the contract with ATM and we have a kickoff meeting scheduled for next week. Beach maintenance and access improvements. Some work that I wanted to update you all related to the project with the county park creating a new emergency vehicle access. We talked about this, about wanting to no longer use the beach access at fifth and moving it to the county parks for our police and fire to access the beach. We have finalized the project scope. Staff has met multiple times with the county park staff and the engineers. We anticipate receiving a final design of that project within the next 30 days. Once we receive that, it'll go through our public safety committee and also through the PRT board that has to approve it. So more on that, but some good progress on that front for for that beach emergency vehicle access path. Beach access path improvements, we all received a letter from Chip Camp, Senator Campson's office announcing the the ability of securing about $500,000 for the city to continue to enhance beach access, particularly ADA access on the island. So we'll be working towards identifying two paths for the city to install similar facilities as the ones that we just unveiled at 34A. But in addition to that, we have identified other beach access paths that are heavily used. There are low, low lying areas that we would like to make improvements on this fall, potentially installing foot bridges or maybe some sand shell to elevate them. So those are listed there. Happy to receive additional feedback from the community about additional paths that we have and need improvement. But we're moving, we're moving diligently and making making those improvements this fall. Beach maintenance and restoration, we talked, already talked about breach inlets. I'll just talk about the larger offshore projects that we have in our timeline for the next, you know, three, four, or five years. I've requested a proposal from Coastal Science and Engineering for us to start the permitting process as we anticipated in the budget, and that would include the large offshore project down at the north end of the island. Also, a short term shawl management project also on the north end of the island. Also, the coordination associated with the potential Army Corps project on the south end of the island. And also identifying a borrow, a sand borrow source offshore for the south end of the island. So the the proposal is going to be, it's going to include all of those different little projects that are going to be our priority for the next few years. So be on the lookout. We'll be presenting that proposal for your approval. Hopefully by the end of this month. All right. And then on buildings and facilities, the first two projects, the fire department exhaust systems for fire station one and two and city hall renovation are those projects that are included in FY 24. So we'll be, we'll be working on requests for proposals, requests for qualifications to get those projects started by next month. Outdoor fitness court at the recreation center, also a project included in FY 24. And we'll be presenting to you all a request for approval for for us to be able to engage the National Fitness Campaign, who have provided a $30,000 grant towards this project so we can get it constructed. And hopefully by the end of this year, it's it's going to be completed and installed and ready for programming and programming and use. Dog park improvements also included in FY 24. We're securing quotes, different quotes for the fencing, for the playground equipment. So that'll be something exciting to see for all those dog lovers in our community. And those that don't have dogs, I guess it's a good place to meet people. Undergrounding power lines. Y'all know, we completed this past fiscal year, completed a project at 21st and Palm. Great project, took longer than I thought, but we got it done. The next project is going to be 14th and Palm. The Minion Energy has assigned that to a an engineering company. I think they're struggling with a little bit of their engineering staff, so they're getting a little bit of help and outsourcing that to to an engineering firm to work on the design. And also working with them on the project for 41st Avenue towards the end of the marina. And seeing whether or not it's feasible at where we are at this point in the game regarding 41st Avenue and hoping to start construction on the drainage project at the end of this year. We want to understand whether it's remotely feasible to combine the two and and do it at the same time. So we'll be having a meeting this Friday with both teams to to continue that that conversation and what what we need to do to make that happen.
We originally thought that was going to be a fairly simple.
It's not.
Process, but it's not.
It's a little bit more complicated than that we intentionally originally thought, but certainly doable. May not be doable for end of this year, but that'll be, that'll be discussed very soon. And then the final project on buildings and facilities is the Palm Boulevard Bike Ped and Parking Enhancements for for Palm Boulevard between 21st and 41st. This is a project we've been working on with SADOT for several months now. They committed to making some conceptual designs of of different alternatives, very similar to the process we went through with the connector. Utilizing the entire road right of way to see how we can accommodate, again, bike, ped, golf, golf cart paths, parking, all that good stuff. Still waiting on an update on when we should be receiving those those concepts. Originally, they had anticipated early fall, so I think we're still, we're still within that timeframe. Or once we do, we'll have DOT come over and present those, present those concepts and options to you all.
I have a question. Quick, quick, yeah. On that.
On that, is there any way we can include golf cart paths as part of this? I think they would, might be called a multi-use path or something.
We did.
Good.
That's all I have.
No legislative update, no miscellaneous business, there being no further business? All those in favor say aye. Off record at 4:29.